Okay, everybody, it's such as seven o'clock, so we're gonna call the regular meeting, the White County Board of Commissioners to order. I will ask for a little bit of grace tonight, uh, never done this before, so this will be my first time, so, uh, hopefully it'll be as, as well as could be. We'll start off with our prayer and pledge, would, uh, Commissioner Goff, please?
Let us pray. Our gracious God, we come before you once again, thanking you for another day that you've blessed us with, we thank you for the opulent amount of blessings you continue to bestow upon us, we pray that you would be with us tonight as governing board, lift us up as we make decisions, and we pray that you would go before us with discernment and, and guidance and wisdom as we can make decisions that would be the best for our constituents in our community, we pray that you would be with all of us as we, uh, expect inclement weather, be with all those who are traveling, pray that you would continue to lift us up as a nation, as a state, and as a city, we pray that you give us blessings of reconciliation and redemption, it's all this we ask through your son's holy name, amen. Place the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your mother, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Roll call.
Colville.
Here.
Larry Daniels.
Here.
Kane Rogers. Chris Brington.
Here.
Landon Selby. Dakota White.
Here.
Robert McCormick. Becky Golden.
Here.
Derek Hutchings. Jordan Coe. Roger Mason.
Here.
Thomas Markison.
Here.
TK Austin.
Here.
David Cranford.
Here.
I have nine present, five absent.
Alright, so we do have a form, uh, I will entertain a motion to approve and spread the minutes on the consent count.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and second, all in favor? Vote? Motion carried. Alright, and we'll move to number six, which is a resolution from the Steering A Committee, Commissioner Austin?
Okay, uh, this is, uh, our annual approval of, uh, the road list, is all it is, it's just, uh, for guidelines of the state, uh, our system has to have a list of roads detailed to work on.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve, motion approved.
Second.
You got a motion and second, I guess we need a roll call vote.
Chris Brington.
Yes.
TK Austin.
Yes.
Dakota White.
Yes.
David Cranford.
Yes.
Larry Daniels.
Yes.
Colville.
Yes.
Becky Golden.
Yes.
Roger Mason. Thomas Markison.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? I have nine yes, five absent.
Alright, number seven, resolution from Steering B Committee, Commissioner Mason?
Uh, we have three resolutions coming out of Steering Committee B, with oh eight, zero zero, or zero two, twenty twenty five, oh nine, uh, and ten. Uh, resolution eight is a resolution updating the building permit fees in White County to align with the standards and regulations of two thousand eighteen international building codes from the International Code Council. Um, so basically, what this resolution does is changes the fee schedule, uh, to be more in line with, with those codes. Uh, resolution number nine is a resolution requesting the hundred fourteenth session of the Tennessee General Assembly to allocate one half of the real estate transfer tax to the county where the tax was collected on a recurring basis. So, uh, Tennessee imposes a tax of thirty seven cents per hundred dollars of value for the privilege of publicly recording documents. Right now, the state, uh, retains all of that tax, and we're asking the General Assembly to, um, consider allocating half of that tax back to the county, uh, with this resolution. Uh, resolution number ten is a resolution authorizing a continuous five-year reappraisal cycle. The, uh, Tennessee Code sixty seven five sixteen oh one establishes a general six-year reappraisal for updating and equalizing property taxes, um, and this resolution, um, sets reappraisal, uh, for White County at a continuous five-year cycle beginning July first, twenty twenty five. Any questions concerning those?
So, so we have all three resolutions been explained, uh, we need, would you like to pull one out or set it right, or would we like to go ahead and approve those together?
I make a motion to approve all three.
I, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
So, the, the number ten, are there is a resolution to, uh, to keep it on a five-year cycle and still going back down to two or three?
Yes, sir. I believe five is the state law required, but is that right, Junior?
Yeah, we are on a five or six-year cycle right now, but they're, they're going to approve, composite with this year, uh, a more, more recurring, uh, cycle, like two, three, maybe one year for the bigger counties, like the four big counties in the state.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Alright, I have a motion on the floor, and a second. Okay, roll call vote.
Thomas Markison.
Yes.
Roger Mason.
Yes.
Becky Golden.
Yes.
Dakota White.
Yes.
TK Austin.
Yes.
David Cranford.
Yes.
Chris Brington.
Yes.
Larry Daniels.
Yes.
Colville.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? I have nine yes, five absent.
Alright, so that passes, and so now we're gonna move to item number eight, which is resolutions from the Budget Committee, uh, Commissioner Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, we had, uh, four resolutions that are coming out of budget, that's eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, oh two, twenty twenty five. Uh, the first, eleven, oh two, twenty twenty five, uh, has three different components to it, so bear with me. Um, the first is a training supplement funded by the state for EMS employees, is almost thirteen thousand dollars. The second is a training supplement also funded by the state for SRO officials, uh, or SRO officers that complete the required trainings, almost eight thousand dollars. And the third was to appropriate funds, uh, from the sale of surplus vehicles to, uh, purchase a vehicle as a second SRO officer that's, uh, located at the White County High School, that's eleven thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. All three of those items are not recurring and do not affect our fund balance nor maintenance effort. Resolution twelve, oh two, twenty twenty five, also general fund, this is to amend the twenty twenty five budget, and give funds for an additional building codes inspector, um, that's in the amount of twenty eight thousand dollars, this would be, this would be recurring. Uh, resolution thirteen, oh two, twenty twenty five is, uh, capital projects account, this is nine hundred fifty five thousand dollars from ARP funds to go to Monte Croft and the district for water system improvements, and then lastly, uh, this is fourteen, oh two, twenty twenty five, coming from general fund, this is a one-time donation of five thousand dollars to go to the nonprofit Friends of White County Animals to be used for, for spay and neuter services of cats in White County, that's also not recurring and doesn't affect the maintenance effort that would come from unassigned, unassigned fund. And I'll make a motion to approve, all four of us?
Uh, I'd like to have, uh, this, oh two, twenty twenty five, I'd like to have that pulled back and sent back to committee.
Okay, so we have a motion for resolution fourteen, oh two, twenty twenty five. Yeah, through all four, we, we have a second to approve all four? Okay, so.
I, I, I want to, uh, I guess amend the motion to have, uh, fourteen, oh two, twenty twenty five sent back to committee.
Okay, so we have fourteen, oh two, twenty twenty five, a motion on the floor to have it amended, the original motion amended to approve all four, to have that one sent back to the committee. Do we have a second?
We have a spin scheme, other stuff that we found out about this that needs to be discussed.
I'll second, I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion to separate fourteen, oh two, twenty twenty five, and send it back to committee.
I'd like to separate the vote on separate. The twelve, twelve, two, twenty five, I'd like to pull it out and the vote on its separate instead of voting on them all together.
Alright, so we have twelve, two, twenty five, which is the government buy-off, that, uh, so those just will be, just over here. So, if we do that on both of the twelve.
I have a second, I'll second.
Alright, any discussion over that?
I have a question.
Sure.
Is this in addition to the person that he has now, so this, like, brings him to Toby?
No, that's your question, we get, we really, we're ready to read this now, would. I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's vote. Okay, so we're gonna vote, pull it out, so we can discuss. Okay, so all in favor? Vote? Which is improving eleven, oh thirteen. We have a motion to approve eleven, oh thirteen. Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll give you a second.
Alright, and it's also to me, the motion is to determine if these things have to. Do we vote on the year of the election? Eleven, thirteen, and send fourteen back. Alright, so we've got a, we're voting right now, send eleven and thirteen approved, and send the fourteen back, all in favor? Oh, is it roll call? Alright, let's roll call.
Chris Brington.
Yes.
TK Austin.
Yes.
Dakota White.
Yes.
David Cranford.
Yes.
Larry Daniels.
Yes.
Colville. Becky Golden.
Yes.
Roger Mason.
Yes.
Thomas Markison.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? I have nine yes, one no, five absent.
Passes, and now we can go to resolution thirteen, sorry, yes, twelve, oh two, dash twenty five, excuse me. Um, and have open discussion on that, did, uh?
We need a motion.
Oh, I guess we do, yeah, I thought we were sending the other one.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second, do we have any discussion on it?
Give it back to your question, if yes, if you think.
Okay, so we got, any other discussion?
I just, we have a question in, uh, the statement also, we're, we are gearing up for this person to be a commercial inspection staff. And we don't have anyone on staff right now that can currently do that. He can do it, he can do it. Not with his workload currently. No, no, yeah, I'm sorry, it's not his workload, workload, yes.
Alright, so we're ready for a roll call vote, any other discussion, anybody else? Roll call vote.
Thomas Markison.
Yes.
Roger Mason.
Yes.
Becky Golden, no. Dakota White.
Yes.
TK Austin.
Yes.
David Cranford.
Yes.
Chris Brington.
No.
Larry Daniels.
No.
Colville.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? I have six yes, three no, five absent.
Alright, that fails. Okay, so we'll move on to the resolution, or number nine, from the Financial Management Committee, Mr. Dakota White?
This resolution came from the Financial Management Committee, and I'm going to defer to our finance director, Chad Martin, he will do a much better job at explaining it than I.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, so this is a resolution that would adopt provision two, which is a provision that, uh, to our Tennessee Certified Retirement System, right now, once an employee crosses the Social Security maximum threshold, um, that you would charge Social Security on in a, in a calendar year, their contributions go from five percent to five point five percent. Uh, this typically happens for one employee, and it happens usually in November first to December, creates a, a problem in reporting to TCRS. Uh, so we're asking to add this provision to our plan to note that when that employee's contribution doesn't change, it always stays at five percent like every other employee. The, uh, effect on our TCRS premium and rate is essentially consequential, um, just because of the, the low amount, uh, that this generates. It's more of a housekeeping measure than it would significantly affect reporting, so we're just asking to add this provision to our TCRS.
I'll make a motion to approve, thank you, sir.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, approved, uh, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Chris Brington.
Yes.
TK Austin.
Yes.
Dakota White.
Yes.
David Cranford.
Yes.
Larry Daniels.
Yes.
Colville.
Yes.
Becky Golden.
Yes.
Roger Mason.
Yes.
Thomas Markison.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? I have nine yes, five absent.
Motion passes. And item number ten, we're gonna do notaries.
I have Corey Bailey Cole, Michelle Holder, Tony Magret in second, Judy Knoll, Vanessa O'Neil, Wendy Russell, and Beth Strickland.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Alright, for a voice vote, all in favor? Vote? Notaries approved. Okay, item number eleven, old business. Do we have any old business? Alright, item number twelve, new business, Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have two, uh, resolutions under new business tonight, the first one is resolution sixteen dash zero two dash twenty twenty five, it's a resolution to authorize the execution of a contract for inmate communication services. Uh, we've recently went through a request and proposals process, where we've seen, uh, six proposals for inmate communication services, this is telephone services. Uh, this is something that we've had, our current vendor, we've had them for a long time, but it's time to, to go back through this process again. Uh, we just, we've, uh, went through that, it's been awarded by the purchasing convenience, and we're asking for the, uh, to enter into this contract, uh, on behalf of the county. Uh, there's no cost to the county for this, uh, for this service. It is a five-year agreement, uh, that we will be in with this, with this company. The reason that we're bringing it under new business tonight is really just to expedite the process instead of waiting a whole other month and building committees and stuff. This is kind of a time-sensitive issue with our contract ending, but currently there is no way to get this in place, so we're just asking that this be a first.
Motion to approve. Second. I have a motion and a second to approve, resolution sixteen, oh two, dash two zero two five? What's that?
Do we have the options to be able to?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Dakota White.
Yes.
Becky Golden.
Yes.
TK Austin.
Yes.
Roger Mason.
Yes.
Colville.
Yes.
Larry Daniels.
Yes.
Thomas Markison.
Yes.
David Cranford.
Yes.
Chris Brington.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? I have nine yes, five absent.
And then we have, maybe, resolution seventeen, oh two, dash two zero two five?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution to declare items as surplus property, uh, bring this before you deny, honestly, just for, uh, to make it a little bit easier on the jail staff over there, in order to get this ready. These, uh, have been taken out of service, they've been replaced, I mean, so they're not easy to move, uh, as you can imagine, and so we'd like for them to just be able to auction, us to be able to auction them off right now, where they're at, is to have the way all known and right, and go through the committee process, and the committee, and the county commission process in March. So we go and get them out of the way, uh, and get them on boat deals over there, so this is one, this is before you deny, it's for two commercial gas combustion oven ranges that are at the jail.
I'll make a motion to approve, sir.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Chris Brington.
Yes.
TK Austin.
Yes.
Dakota White.
Yes.
David Cranford.
Yes.
Larry Daniels.
Yes.
Colville.
Yes.
Becky Golden.
Yes.
Roger Mason.
Yes.
Thomas Markison.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? I have nine yes, five absent.
And both of the resolutions are approved, thank you, Mr. Martin. Alright, at this time, we will, uh, recognize anybody from the audience that would like to come up and speak with the Commission. You'll have a few minutes, uh, each to speak. Okay, make sure you state your name, sir, please, tell us who you are.
I'm Robert Taylor, uh, I live on Brookmead Drive in Sparta, I just wanted to address the, uh, upcoming tax situation with, uh, the response that Denny had put in the paper last week, and, uh, I just wanted to say the property tax, I just want to remind Commissioners, your job is to adjust the multiplier so that our property taxes don't increase drastically. Excuse me, I'll get the food a little bit, being, we are getting reassessed soon this year, and crazy prices are being paid for these houses in today's markets, I'm sure we all know that, nearly double what they were seven years ago. People from other, other areas of the country are moving here with deep pockets, and that's gonna kill our tax, because it's, uh, it's gonna raise our values twice what they were, and, uh, it's up to you, Board of Commissioners, to control the prices of our taxes. And, uh, I know there's many things needed to keep this county going, and, and you need to assess exactly what's going on with that. And, uh, there's a lot of situations with employees in this county who don't, haven't been getting raises for the last six years, I think those employees deserve raises. And, uh, I just, I just want to really emphasize that when all these decisions are being made, please keep our house taxes down, it's gonna kill us. Uh, before my mom passed, she was making twelve hundred and eighty dollars a month in income, so can you be, can you imagine being the person living there all your life? You have a set income like I do, and your taxes are gonna go up another hundred, two hundred dollars a year, a hundred, really gonna pay the money. Um, it's gonna kill us when these houses are reassessed, which is about to take place in a moment, and, uh, I'm sure most of our values are gonna probably double. Uh, the next thing I want to discuss a little bit is the wheel tax, this fund was created to have insurance for county employees being required by the government, I think it was about twelve years ago. I'm not even sure, were you here, Denny, when the wheel tax was started?
Well, I was on the commission.
You were on the commission, I, I thought you came about a year or two later, but, um, I was at every one of those meetings, and I remember all of them, well, this place was full of people every month, but, um, what happened is the public really didn't back the way it was, it was handled, um, it was, it was voted on and brought in because we were required by the state to have insurance for our, our county employees, and I agree with that, I worked in nine-one-one, and I couldn't believe when I started working in nine-one-one that our police department didn't have insurance, I'm like, I can you have police and fire, people that don't have insurance, that's the craziest thing ever in my life, well, shortly thereafter, the state mandated it. And, uh, it was a scramble for those committee back then to find a way to provide insurance for the employees. And the wheel tax is what came about. At that time, it was really not wanted the way it was done, but they had to do something immediately, and they did what they thought they had to do. And what we said was, okay, if you're gonna do it, no matter what the public says, and we understand why, then keep that money separate. Because they didn't know what it was gonna cost to get employees county tax, or county insurance, and they just said, well, we're gonna come up with forty-two dollars on an urban license plate, and that's how we're gonna get the money to do it, and the public came back and said, well, how much it gonna cost, well, we actually don't know. And it was never, and what the, what the public said was, okay, if, if you're gonna do it that way, keep that money in a separate fund. Every penny you collect on, on those plates, keep it in a separate fund so you know how much money you got, you know over here how much it costs your insurance. And it was never done, the Commissioners didn't like that idea, and they said, we're just gonna throw it in the general funds, so then it's basically lost, you don't really know where it was going. So, that was very upsetting, in twenty twenty-three, twenty-seven thousand three hundred and seven plates or so, creating a little over a million, a hundred and, about a million, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This insurance was to pay for county insurance only for employees. Myself being retired, my insurance has increased also, uh, meanwhile, I paid about a hundred and thirty-eight dollars a month for insurance as a retiree from my social security and my pension. No one's helping me pay for my insurance, and that has increased double what it was seven years ago. But, um, I'm just saying the employees have to have insurance, we know that, but I don't think the taxpayers are responsible for paying all of the payment, or even most of the payment. Everybody on no work and still is paying drastically larger amounts a month for insurance than what they paid for five, six, seven years ago. And I think that should be for county employees also, um, I just don't want you thinking, well, let's raise the wheel tax, um, I like the wheel tax. The wheel tax being a very good idea in a way that not only property owners are paying this insurance, but everybody who buys a license plate in this county. Meaning that if you, you rent the apartment building, or you live in a trailer, or you're renting, you're still buying that county insurance tax, and that's, it's a good way, it's a good way, it hasn't gone up since. And it's, it's a good way, it's a good way, it hasn't gone up since it was created. It's a good thing, it's provided money and insurance for it, but I'm just asking, please, don't raise that rate anymore, at least it's what it is. Um, but, um, my whole point being is basically tax. Just like Denny went and said, please remember to keep our taxes somewhere near where they are today so that we can still live here. I look at how many other counties around Tennessee, people live there all their lives, can't afford to live there no more. Because of taxes, their, their cost of living is up so high, they live there all their lives, and they can't afford to live there because these people come from other places with deep pockets and paying crazy amounts of these houses. It's not our fault. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. David. Anybody else have anything they would like to say?
I was gonna say one thing, the money is counted, the wheel tax has, has, with God, it's here, it's, it's, uh,
what's that?
The wheel tax is counted, every, every dollar is, is, uh, I got.
I understand, but I just, even the public didn't, didn't like the way it was drawn in the general, it was, it was really hard to vote. Um, it was, I understand, you just don't keep track of it by saying this is how your license plate is sold, and this is how much you pay for it, I understand you can do that. But, the public wanted a, it was, it was never brought back to the public what insurance was costing. Seven years ago, and never has since been revealed to the public, this is what we're, this is what the office thinks. Can you make, you didn't think that's not the public's business?
Oh, no, no, it's, I was, I was, it was never, it was never brought back to the public what it cost. But which I know.
I just, Denny, or Mr. Executive, sorry, it does have its own account number, but, um, the figure of over a million, I think the budget we passed last year, Mr. Markham, was probably four hundred and eighty thousand or so for income on the wheel tax, is that?
Well, this, this is what you sold in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Twenty, it's about one, it's a little over one point one three dollars, three point three. Now, that was in twenty twenty-three, I'm sure a lot more people that are in data with this twenty twenty-three. So there'd be more money in that state.
But I don't think that that number covers what we currently pay for, I, I don't think we make enough to cover our employees' insurance right now.
That method happens with short.
It's a losing fund.
Yeah.
It's not a money profitable fund, sir.
I understand you're totally, but what I'm saying is, why should the taxpayer have to pay a hundred percent of employees? I don't, nobody helps me pay my money.
We, we don't pay a hundred percent of county employees.
And no, no employer out there, big employer, you still pay, my wife, her sister, she's a tech woman, she's still paying four, five hundred dollars a month, but please, for her insurance.
Our county employees pay that now.
Do they?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That man sitting two over from you could probably tell you the premium from his brain.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, but that's how brilliant he is.
And it's, 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 you know, I understand, I'm just saying.
Yes, sir, it is.
Yeah.
But our premiums for the county are very expensive.
Anybody else? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Uh.
We are adjourned.